... nation, and we are in the middle of a duty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have somewhat of a busy agenda, but like with every meeting, we will take any citizens' concerns. So anything that's not being, going to be addressed during the meeting, if you'd like to discuss it, we're happy to have you up. Seeing no one at this point, Tim, would you like to talk about communications and announcements?
Sure, yeah, we have a few announcements here. We have our anticipated waste day scheduled for Saturday, June 25th, and from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 in the afternoon, it will be at One Maple Lab, which is the old hand mill, and home residence based over oil-based waste, stains, chemicals, power batteries, devices, poxies, pesticides, herbicides, and used tires. They will also accept TVs, air conditioners, and other electronics, as well as light bulbs and thermostats that may contain mercury. If anybody has any questions, please call the Board of Health at 781-767-3030. We also have on same day, Saturday, June 25th, the Holbrook Historical Society is holding their annual strawberry festival, and that's down at the Robert School, down at 320 Union And as the Board knows, we got a notification yesterday of the awarding of our CDBG grant, which if you recall was a joint application with the town of Rockland, and it was awarded yesterday, total amount of $710,000, which breaks down between a fuel assistance program and a home improvement program. And I did send the detail to you, the breakdown. That's all I have for announcements. I can go into my report.
Please.
So just a few things on my report. Last Tuesday was Flag Day, and once again, the South School did an outstanding job at honoring our flag, and those students could teach us all a little bit about patriotism, because it's just a great, great group, and Mary Clawher does just an outstanding job with, with those students. So it was an excellent day. We talked about the CDBG grant. On the Union Street tip project, the, currently were slated for FY '21. The, the actual formal tip is due out over the next couple of weeks. So it'd be nice to move up on that, but it's also good to be on the tip. So, so more to follow on that. We do have a contract for the Board of Selectmen to vote on and to sign for Laurel Park Water Main Replacement. If you recall, that was probably the worst line in town, next to, probably that ties with, with Pond Street. And we do have a contract. We want the work to begin soon. It was voted at town meeting to appropriate funds for it. And once we get the contract signed, I think work will begin ASAP. So that'll be good news for the folks on Laurel Park. We had a meeting last night, the Economic Advisory Board meeting met last night. We talked about a couple of things. We had Attorney Mark Bobrowski there, who, if you recall, Attorney Bobrowski sort of walked us through, was hired by the town to do the overlay district a couple of years back. We brought him in to just talk to the group about rezoning the entire town. And it's a big effort. I know Selectman McGahey was there. I don't know if you have anything more to add to it. It's early phases. He's going to do a proposal, but it, it was, it was a good session, I think. Planning Board members were there as well. And we also talked about the Kennedy School and the South School, and the repurposing of those, and what we talked about doing, and I'll bring this at a future agenda item for a vote of the Board, but to actually issue a request for qualifications for both buildings to see what interest there is out there for the reuse of those buildings. We have our Peter Brown, who's handling our tax title and our receivership, coming to Holbrook next Wednesday for a multi-hour, just training on the receivership, scrubbing the reports on the, on the tax title and the outstanding, and the accounts receivable outstanding, in addition to the tax title. And we actually, this week, money is coming in. This week, we received $50,000 in tax title for one property. So that all goes to our free cash. And there'll be more on the street acceptance. We still have another step to go to actually vote for the order of taking. Margie has some work to do on that. We have to do it within 120 days, so it'll be on your agenda, hopefully in July, if not early August. And that's my report, barring your questions.
Any questions from the Board? No? Great. No questions?
Okay.
The hand was up. All right. Chief Smith, if you wouldn't mind bringing Officer Martins and McGregor forward, and I think we have a ceremony of recognition for them. Please.
Mr. Chairman, this incident happened on April 30th. Young mayor was too far away. He had himself a night. He had already taken prescription medicine. Officer McGregor and Officer Martins, we would disarm him, get him into custody, and get him to the hospital without incident, without anyone getting hurt. It's a great job done by all.
Okay. Great. So we do have certificates. Do you have the certificates, Tim?
We do. Two certificates here that summarize the events of April 29th. And it's a certificate of recognition we like to give for John Walton, so we certainly appreciate that. And add to your selfless efforts regarding this issue, we'd like great credit upon yourself and your fellow officers. Town Hallbrook, we're very fortunate to have you dedicated, have dedicated public safety officials such as yourselves protecting the citizens of Holbrook. And so the seal is affixed on the 22nd of June, and signed by all the selectmen. So Officer McGregor, congratulations. And it's identical, because it's the same, same incident, the exact same writing for Officer Martins. Thank you very much.
That's K-9 Charlie.
We have a few minutes before the first hearing, which happens at 7:15, so we can take up Item D, which is a request for salary increase for part-time clerk in the community So this is, this matter is, was brought forward by Ruth Davey, who is requesting that her hourly rate be brought in line with the hourly rate paid to the principal clerk. This rate is $18.87 per hour. It's voted by annual town meeting. Her current rate is just about a dollar less than that, and the last increase that she had was 2012. So because she's not part of a union and she's not part of the salary and wage, it's probably appropriate to have this matter discussed. Fairly straightforward. Not sure if anyone has any questions in regards to it.
You covered it. That's excellent.
So I guess we'll take a vote. Are we raising it to the 1887?
1887.
So I move that we, that we increase Ruth Davey's salary from 1778 to 1887, keeping in line with the principal clerk part-time. That was voted at the 2017 annual town meeting. Seconded by Mr. Lee. All those in favor?
I just want to add that Ruth is going to be, be busy with the new grant and doing a, I'm sure, an outstanding job on the new grant as she has done with the, with the old one. So, thanks.
You're getting a dollar more, so we're expecting that much more from you. No, but I do appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Sometimes you have people that slip through the cracks like this, so, you know, don't let four years pass before you keep us in line. So I do appreciate you letting us know about the discrepancy there. All right, we do have another, another item we could probably take up, accepting the recommendation of the Superintendent of Public Works in order to fill the position of crashperson laborer. Benji, would you mind telling us about the position and the individual you want to fill?
Okay, this is the fill of vacancy that we have in the department. The candidate that I would like to recommend for the job is Joseph Barry. He's familiar with the area. He's got some relations in the, in this area also, and he's a great, great person. He seems like he's going to be a great worker and a great fit for the department, so it's my, my recommendation.
Okay. Is Joe Barry here tonight?
Uh, no, he's not.
No? Okay. Can you tell us a little bit more about his background, what he's done before? Has he worked for DPWs before?
He's done some work landscaping. He's driving a truck right now. He's hauling sheet rock and house, house materials for building right now at this time. He's a family man also.
And where does he live?
He's in Eastern right now. He's going to be moving to Bridgewater.
Okay. Any other questions for the Superintendent?
No.
Okay. I move, I move that we accept the, the recommendation of Joseph Barry to fill the position of crashperson laborer in the Public Works Department.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moriarty. All those in favor? And one abstention. Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. So is that to be, to be, will start immediately or in July?
He's got a vacation with the family that he's already booked months ago, so when he gets back from that, he'll be starting.
Okay, so it's 7:15 now, so we do have a public hearing on the application of Sendy Corp. doing business as Holbrook Food Mart. Man Jubelin Patel, manager, it's 855 South Franklin Street, to transfer, change the location, and request approval of a pledge of all alcohol package store license from Holbrook Package Incorporated, doing business as Holbrook Package Store, 41 Plymouth Street, to be transferred to Sendy Corporation, doing business as Holbrook Food Mart, 855 South Franklin Street. So a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
So motion. Seconded by Mr. Sheen. All those in favor? Great, thank you. Hi, sir, how are you?
Good evening. How are you? My name is Matthew Porter. I represent the applicant Sendy Corp. As you've stated, this is a transfer of all alcohol license, change of location, and a pledge of that license to Rockland Trust. The current applicant has been operating in the same location for nearly 15 years now. They currently hold a beer and wine license, an all alcohol license became available, and they've signed an asset agreement in order to purchase that. So, you know, here, the, you know, structure of their business is not truly changing. They're essentially just trying to gain the ability to sell liquor as well. Mr. Patel has operated, like I said, for 15 years in the community. He also lives here. They haven't had any prior violations as far as their liquor license is concerned.
Okay. Mr. Sheen?
No, I don't have any question. I'd just like to say that Mr. Patel and his family's a big donator when it comes to events in Holbrook, like Holbrook Pride Day and stuff. They donate a lot. They're generous with their donations of stuff that people need.
Okay.
Just wondering what happened with the beer and wine license?
Yeah, so if you see within the package, there's actually an affidavit that's signed by the applicants. And so essentially how that it works is they sign an affidavit stating that upon approval of the all alcohol license, they will surrender the beer and wine. So presumably it would go back to the town and be available to a new applicant.
Could I just add to that?
Sure.
It's my understanding, though, between now and that approval, could it be sold?
Or? Between now and the approval, realistically, they hold that, so I guess hypothetically, they could sell it. Pocket licenses are not allowed by the ABCC, so you can't essentially hold a dead license for more than a six-month period of time, once the town acts on that. So if the town was looking to, to, you know, bring that back, that license to the town, so the applicant would have six months from there, you know, upon the statute, in order to try to structure a deal if they did want to sell it to a new applicant.
Thank you.
But they obviously, they can't be sitting with two licenses at the same location. I understand that.
And then, so the, the Holbrook Package Store will cease to exist, then?
That is my understanding, yeah. I mean, I don't represent them, obviously, but if they're selling their all alcohol license, then that's my understanding.
Okay. And I know that there's been some, some trouble there on, at the Holbrook Package Store with the ABCC, so this is actually probably a good thing that if they're, the owner's hearts aren't in it, just to get rid of the license so that they can, they can move on. So, any other questions from the Board?
No.
No?
It's a public hearing, so.
Okay. Is there anyone that would wish to speak on, on this matter?
Yes, my name is Dennis Bergen. I represent Mr. Patel, Mr. Patel, the Community Package Store. My name is Dennis Bergen, and actually, my office is just down the street of 24, 2 and 3. So I apologize, I did actually give some, some papers to you, but I only split them today because I hadn't even heard about it last night. They were briefly last night. They only found out about this yesterday. But last night, Mr. Patel came to me to tell me that they have a community package store, and that this other store is not going to get a full license. As you know, they're in South Franklin Street. That's an area of Holbrook that recently had some commercial problems. As you know, the stocking shop went dark around 2013, less business was coming along. But as you tell, Mr. Patel, that alone is probably not a reason to stop somebody else from having business. And this morning, I walked the area of South Franklin, which I'm sure is very popular, children living here, and Food Mart. And as I passed, a little boy zoomed past me on bicycle, munching a chocolate bar and enjoying the summer. And that gave me pause to think about other considerations. And I met with two ladies who live in the house right behind the mart. Those two ladies have children. One of them is disabled, so she's there all day. And both of them tell me stories about how there was a lot of disturbances all day long from the shop mart, from the mart, and that they felt that they also actually had a saying there was drug problems there. One lady said that she was there at home with her disabled child with disturbances all day, and the other lady said that she can't even go out on her deck, her porch, at nighttime after 10:00, because of all the people that are there. And both of them agreed that if this mart gets a full license, a full license where it's a horrible store, that that is just going to cause more problems for them and the others. And I spoke to the new pastor, and as you know, this church tried to sign the mart. Now, the church has always had a good relationship with people who live in the mart over the years, but you can guess his opinion about how a horrible store would be as a contribution to the community or that part of the community in South Franklin Street. Now, I am not a liquor license lawyer. This is not my area. My office is up the street. I'm open to anybody who comes in, of course, anybody in Holbrook. But I did look up the law, and the, I looked up the statute that gives the licensing authority, your authority, the right to, you know, really approve this license. And I did note that it said that, let me see, premises except those in in Holbrook, or those that are a few floors up, are located within the greatest 500 feet of a school or a church shall have the license for the sale of alcohol beverages, except the local licensing authority determines in it, and after hearing, that the premises are not detrimental to the educational and spiritual activities of a school or church. And I gave you the counsel I told you. I actually got the app, then signed affidavits, and put it in the pastor, because that's my role when I live there, for affidavits. And there seems to be a law that just seems to be pressing, and legislators, individuals like yourself, have dealt with this problem before. I should say, by the way, in case I'm, you know, doesn't know, the church is 50 feet from the mart, so it's very dangerous. But really, I think I'm here today for Mr. Patel, Mr. Patel, because this is very, South Franklin Street, and I'm here for the two young ladies that are pastors of the church, to say maybe the selectmen could look into their hearts to give this part of your town a little deeper, and not actually extend a full liquor license to this mart, which right now is also in the gas station. I don't know logically how good it is to actually have a full liquor license in the gas station. Less than that, too. Thank you very much for the listening.
Thank you very much. Chief Smith?
Mr. Chairman, we've had 30 calls up there in the last two years, all various calls from accidents, business persons, stuff like that. In the two years, we've had one drug offense up there. That's it. It's no different than any other part of town, and I wouldn't call that a bad area.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I think it's a merit, and if you want to link the competitors, I think it's a great location. A lot of people going home and enabling, we could stop on the right-hand side of the street, and it wouldn't necessarily be going, taking a left and coming back to the track. I think.
And it operates, it operates as an existing liquor store now, without the full license, okay?
Well, that's my same reasoning. It already has a license. It's just actually add one more section to it.
Yep. If you have anything further to?
Yeah, if I would just, I just respond to that quickly. Obviously, in relation to the comments by the woman that my brother mentioned there, you know, we can't speak to those, obviously, without having those people here. As far as it relates to the church itself, they were given notification of the hearing, and certainly, you know, as is required, you know, notice was sent there. So my assumption would be, you know, if they had an overreaching issue with this, you know, they would be here as well. So those would only be the two items that I would, that I would press on as far as a response to that.
Okay. And I think, I just find it just strange that you have a competitor or a potential competitor within the same geographical region in Holbrook where they have a lawyer representing them to tell us about items that, of why we shouldn't put something there, and it, it just seems very obvious that they don't want it there because of the competitive advantage that they would lose, because they're, they would be now competing on par with the exact same store. Obviously, competition is good for pricing. It's good for the consumers. It's existing in, in, or at least in part, selling of alcohol is existing in that part of town, and it seems to be a, a pretty busy cross-section with Avon, with, with Holbrook, South Holbrook, and with Brockton. I don't have any, any particular issues with it. I don't know if you have any other opinions?
No.
One way or the other? No? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else, any neighbors or?
Is there any, anyone else to speak on the, on the matter? Yes?
My name is Jose Andrade. I'm the owner of the building where Holbrook Food Mart is. And as you know, there's been a liquor store there many, many years, 60 years. So now that they've moved that liquor store out of there, I'd like to know if I have an option of maybe purchasing a beer and wine license if it becomes available, so we can keep it in that location.
Yeah, I mean, that would, it goes back to the town.
Everyone has a right to apply for it.
You'd have to apply for it, then, at that point.
Do we still have beer and wine licenses here available?
No.
Anyone know? No?
So once it's, once it's rescinded, it would have to be issued back?
If I may, and I obviously can speak to this gentleman afterwards, but if, would you be opposed, obviously, if my client was able to come to an agreement with the, with the proposer? Obviously, you'd have to come before the Board on the application for that, for the new license, but.
And transfer, transfer it?
It would be, it would be a transfer, is what you're talking about.
Correct. Yeah, the transfer of the beer and wine.
Right now, I don't think that has anything to do with us.
I don't think it does.
Not at this point. Not at this point. If you wanted to work it out with them.
Sure, okay.
That's, that's fine.
I used to own a liquor store about five years ago, so.
Okay. Now, we're talking about one, one situation. Your situation happens to be kind of on the fringe of this one, so it's something that you can certainly discuss with, with the attorney, and see what would potentially happen with, with taking over that license. But it has nothing to do with this hearing at this, at this point in time, though.
Do they have the right to sell the license if they're going to have a vote?
I'm not sure.
I believe they do. I believe they do.
So if the town had an issue with holding multiple licenses, per the statute, if notice was given by the town that we had to act on it, we'd have six months to act on it. At that point, the ABCC required that it went back to the town. But obviously, having a purchase and sale agreement would be acting on it. But as you said, this is a fringe matter as to what's it going to be today.
All right, great. So I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application of Sendy Corp. doing business as Holbrook Food Mart, Man Jubelin Patel, manager, 855 South Franklin Street, to transfer the all alcohol package store license currently held in the name of Holbrook Package Incorporated, doing business as Holbrook Package Store, 41 Plymouth Street, change locations to 855 South Franklin Street, and pledge the license to Rockland Trust, and forward the application to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission for consideration.
Second.
It's moved, seconded. All those in favor? Okay, thank you both.
Thank you very much.
For your time, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Just to close the public hearing.
And I move to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right, thank you. 8:30, we have, I'm sorry, 7:30, we have a joint meeting with the Planning Board for purposes of appointing a resident to fill the vacancy of the Planning Board until annual town election, April 2017, and to fill the position of associate member of the Planning Board until June 30th, 2017. So I have a, a motion to open that joint meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moriarty. All those in favor? Great, thank you. How are you, Wayne?
We're happy to have two young men who have shown interest in, in the Planning Board, and the Planning Board has reviewed their qualifications after posting the position. They were the, actually, the only two applicants for the positions, but I believe that they're both very well qualified. I think that you've had a chance to see their resumes, I'm assuming. Planning Board voted to recommend David Lamaco for the full seat on the Planning Board that I will be resigning fomentarily, after being, have temporary appointment for the Selectmen, and for the associate alternate seat, Vincent Ventosi. Both young engineers that live in town with young families, I think that they will both represent the town well on the Board, and the Planning Board recommended them unanimously. So if, and are both here, if, if the Board would like to talk to either.
Yeah, we have, are both here?
Yes.
Great. Vincent? I just wanted to review your resume, if you wouldn't mind just coming up, just review your resume, just briefly introduce yourself, and we'll do the same for, for David. your resume, just briefly introduce yourself, and we'll do the same for, for David.
Okay, my name's Vincent Ventosi, I've been a resident of Holbrook for the past eight, going on nine years. Bought my first property on South Franklin Street, recently just sold, and now we're in the Bel Air area. I come from a dual degree, I have undergraduate in engineering from Mass Maritime, a master's degree in facility management from Mass Maritime, and I'm covering a senior associate engineer with a firm in Boston. I come with a background in facilities and a background of engineering, and I'm also a local resident, and I have three small children here in the school system.
Excellent, great. Any questions from Mr. Ventosi?
No better than a Mass Maritime graduate.
Yeah, so he had a master's in science and a bachelor's in science, facility in environmental engineering for Mass Maritime. So we could take these, I guess, one at a time, if that's all right with you, Wayne? So I don't know if there's any questions for Mr. Ventosi? No? Great, so I move that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Board to accept Vincent Ventosi as an associate member, filling the vacancy from the resignation of Christopher Golden with the position to, when is that expiring?
It's a point, it's.
It's an alternate position.
So it's expiring at the end of next fiscal year? Is that right?
It does, no, I believe it's long.
Was that April?
June 30th, 2017, to fill the position of annual associate, associate member.
Okay, so associate, so you'll be the associate member?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this, that appointment ends June 30th, 2017.
It's a joint, just remember, it's a joint.
Yep, yep, so all those in favor?
Of course.
For the Planning Board? And it's unanimous?
Yes.
So congratulations, welcome to the Board.
Thank you.
Appreciate your volunteerism, thank you very much. The vacancy because of the retirement, resignation. You get the, you get the opportunity to go second, so if you just want to follow, follow his lead.
Sure, resident of Holbrook for the past three years, actually grew up in Randolph, Massachusetts, right next door. Graduate of Catholic Memorial High School and Massachusetts Maritime Academy with a Bachelor's of Science in Facilities Environmental Engineering. Professional career, I've worked in construction management with Bond Brothers as a construction manager, worked for Harvard University in their Engineering Utilities Department as an engineering supervisor, and I'm currently the Director of Facilities at Boston College. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son at home and live on Countryway.
Excellent, excellent. Great, and so you know each other? Do you know each other from school, or?
Yeah, yeah, we're also very good friends.
Okay, excellent. Great, any questions?
Fantastic addition.
Fantastic addition. It's, it's great to have qualified people, young people willing to give their time to the community, so certainly appreciate that. So I'll move that we accept David Lamaco as a member to fill the vacancy on the Planning Board due to the resignation of Rick Monahan. This is a position that will end with the town election in April 2017.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Also unanimous, so excellent. Thank you very much, congratulations. Do we have a resignation now?
We have, I've, I'm again, the resignation.
Okay.
So I believe that the Planning Board meeting was supposed to continue downstairs in the Planning Board office, so I guess we'll take our leave from you.
You want to swear them in? Downstairs, okay, excellent.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. So I move that we?
Paul.
Paul, yes.
Yes, just like to thank Chris and Rick for the service of the Planning Board for many, many years, and I know I said it a month ago with Wayne, but, you know, Wayne's also done a great job with the Planning Board, and it's great to have you manage the group yourself with you guys tonight, so thank you.
Fantastic, thank you for your service, gentlemen. All right, so I move that we close the, the joint hearing with the Planning Board?
So moved.
Seconded, all those in favor? All right, next order of business is to discuss and vote the requirements for the July 9th Freedom Festival, 5K run at the William B. Dalton Post, 137 American Legion, 777 Plymouth Street. Mr. Anastasio is in attendance.
Hi, good evening, thank you Chairman Moore, the rest of the Board of Selectmen, Tim Gordon, chief to my right. My name's Paul Anastasio, Senior Vice Commander of the American Legion in Holbrook. To my left is the Commander, Andy Best, and Clerk Julie Basler. So we wanted to come in front of the Board and look for a one-day license to serve all alcohol outside, we're doing a Freedom Festival mainly to fundraise, well, all to fundraise for 22K and Camp Valhalla. 22K is Veterans Suicide Awareness Program, and Camp Valhalla is a veterans retreat program, which, if you guys have any questions about that, Julie's kind of the lead on that. We plan on doing live entertainment outside under the protection of a forty-by-eighty tent and serving alcohol, and it would be coned off. We submitted a drawing for medical or emergency, so they can get in on the west side of the building. There was discussion about parking, we changed the, a few of the locations of where we're going to do things, so we have a hundred and five parking spots on location, on premise, which should suffice. We plan on having a police detail, two for that, for that day. And in the morning, we were planning on doing a 5K run, which originally we were going to go through Abington, not realizing the headache between cutting through Weymouth and Abington, now we're just going to go up Plymouth Street and turn around and then come back down and end at the American Legion. So it'll be a 5K run or a hike, and that's all we have.
All right, so the, this application is for special license because you're actually doing it outside?
Correct.
Outdoors of your facility? Okay.
So is this just beer and wine?
Nobody's looking for all alcohol.
Okay, I don't believe that the ABC will allow all alcohol, I think it's just beer and wine. Somebody can check with that.
Yeah, and it's on, it's on the application here, all alcohol, nonprofit only.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if this, if this application is approved by the ABCC. I assume it, it would be.
Yeah, yeah, it's the one that we've always used for, for the one-day license.
But it's always been a beer and wine?
Has it?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't, I don't know about that.
Okay, I could be wrong, but I thought it was.
Yeah, there's just designations here, one for all alcohol, one for wine and malt beverages.
Another ones, like St. Joseph's, and all the other ones, usually it's an all-day, one-day liquor license.
Yeah, like St. Joseph's or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, and so it'll be, it'll be music, it'll be catered, and what, is there a fee or a door fee to get in?
There is, there's an entrance fee of $20, and, and that's the only thing they have to pay other than to purchase beverages.
And then purchasing beverages?
Correct.
Okay. All right, is there any questions?
Any off-site parking?
We had a discussion earlier in the week with the town administrator, and do you want to talk on that, Tim?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So we, when this first came up, I pulled together Margie Godfrey, Assistant Town Administrator, both chiefs, police and fire, and inspectional services, and we kind of just brainstormed one of the issues here, because we didn't even really know what the license requirements would be. So we talked about, so we ended up calling the ABCC, and we talked to a Herschel Langham, who informed us that what would be required for a liquor license would be a one-day liquor license, so that took care of that. We, we talked about the road race and the hurdles you might have heading east of 139, and then we talked about the parking, and initially, we thought we'd be able to manage the parking with limited street parking. However, upon further discussions with the inspectional services, the Town of Holbrook has a bylaw that requires all parking to be on premise. So went back to Paul, informed him of that, and incorporate, you incorporated your parking into?
Yes.
The diagram here. So once you, you get to a motion, if you get to a motion, you'll see that it, within the motion, it references the fact that there is to be no parking on 139.
And the police detail would manage that to make sure that, that doesn't happen.
So you, are you expecting people to come in on a flow, to arrive early, stay for an hour or two, and then leave?
We do, that's what we anticipate. Some people come in to see one particular band and, and see everything and then leave, and it goes on for nine hours, so I don't anticipate anybody staying the whole time, it'll be a lot of in and out.
Okay.
Just wanted to ask the chief, how many people do you think that they should have?
I mean, I'd love a great showing, you know, I'd love 400 people throughout the day. At one time, I would say maybe 150. When we discussed earlier in the week, we talked about two details for the day, like one within the area and one managing the street and the traffic. I mean, I, it doesn't make any difference to me, it's just less money that would be going. Yeah, we plan on wrapping up around 9:00 PM anyway, outside, so. Okay, no, that's, that's fine.
Might be hard to schedule, yeah.
I've been to quite a few of these in the last couple of years. My heart, anyone who knows me, is for, you know, veterans, and everything's going really smoothly. You know, I've been to Whitman, one, one's in Abington, Whitman VFWs, and everybody works together, you know, it's, it ends up being a great day for everybody, Gold Star families attend, it does come in flows, you know, you know, families with small children come first, and it just ends up working really well. People work, you know, all, all our members work different shifts, many of them are in, you know, police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and they, you know, come in shift, so I, I've been, like I said, I've been to many of them, at the most, it's been 150 if that, at the Whitman VFW. So I just, it's, it's for great causes. I've, I've worked with both presidents of each nonprofit fundraiser, 22K and Camp Valhalla, which are both in Texas. They've done a lot for us, too, for our members. Our members have gone down there for veterans retreats. Camp Valhalla is a wonderful organization, they, someone's donating land down in Texas for our veterans to, you know, camp, hunt, fish, just relax, get away, with their families are invited down there as well, and, you know, if you guys have any questions about either organizations, I'd be happy to answer them.
Like I said, Paul said, I'm the commander down there, I don't foresee any problems, I'll be on, I'll be there all day as usual. I'm also on the Board of Directors of 22K Boston, which we just, was accepted from the Dallas where 22K started from, so this is our really first fundraiser in Boston for 22K, which is, you know, 22 veterans a day, take their own lives, so that's what we really want to do this about, and try to raise some money for these guys and get the Boston chapter, you know, of 22K really kicked off, and, you know, like I said, I don't foresee any problems, especially with the details, and, you know, like I said, I'll be there all day, and, you know, any problems, you know, they can come to me, or I don't plan on leaving, so, you know, I've been doing this my whole life as far as fundraisers, my father's with the ABCC for 42 years, so I've been through a lot of this, and I don't foresee any problems. Thank you.
Paul, will the inside bar be closed?
Yes.
That won't be open at all?
It's not going to be open at all until we close down outside, till 9 o'clock, outside will close, and then inside will open.
We have porter parties for outside, the porter johns for outside.
We were, the building was going to be open for, for overspill of bathroom use, too, but nobody's going to be attending battered, it's going to be shut down.
So all your bartenders will be distributed?
They'll be outside, yeah.
Outside, okay. Great, any other questions?
No.
For a good cause.
Yeah, Dan?
Mr. Chair, I just got a couple of things. I know we talked about the road race, but when we last talked about it, you weren't quite sure if it was going to happen, so.
I'm not sure, I'm still not sure, I don't.
I just want to make sure that you got whatever detail coverage you might need, and you do cones down on Plymouth Street.
Yeah, we'll orchestrate that with chief's men.
And if you, if you look at the motion, there's eight bullets there, the first four bullets are coming directly from the ABCC, those are the requirements that are on the one-day license that pertain to keeping the alcohol, purchasing it separately from the inventory that you have for, for your primary license. The alcohol for this event must be kept separate from, from the club, so you got to even, you know, you got to buy it separately, keep it, maintain it separately, it has to be secured away from the general public during the event and at all times, and, and kept cold, refrigerated, and ice is okay, according to the ABCC, so.
And we do an all aluminum bottles for outside, we're not doing any glass outside at all, so even mix drinks will all be in plastic cups.
And then the last four bullets are items that, that I added, that I'm recommending to the Board in terms of not having alcohol served in front of the building, so you got to, you have a roped area here, it looks like, or some kind of line of demarcation here?
Yes, you can see it'll be all backed towards the back.
Nothing, we're not going to allow anything after the base of the building towards 130, and it's sort of going to be kept behind that line.
And then, we talked about the police details, but I think that's going from two to three, it looks like, so the motion?
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
Okay, and, and then the zoning, the reference to the Town of Holbrook zoning bylaws that requires parking to be on premise, and that the noise level's got to comply with the Board of Health.
How do you come up with two and a half?
Second, we'll commit it all.
Two, two eight-hour, two eight-hour shifts and a four-hour, a four-hour shift. Four hours the minimum detail anyway.
They can buy the liquor from the same people they're doing business with now, right?
Yes.
They have it, Burke Distributors and Quality Beverage are the two items, two distributors that they're, they've mentioned in their form. Okay, Dan?
I move that the Board approve a special alcohol license for the Building Association of the William B. Dalton, American Legion Post, 137, for July 9th, 2016, for an outdoor Freedom Festival from 1:00 PM to 9:30 PM. Specific conditions of this approval include the alcohol be served under this license shall be purchased separately from, from that purchase under the Dalton Club's existing license. The alcohol for this event must be kept separate from the club's existing licensed premises. Alcohol is to be kept in a secure area, isolated from the general public. Alcohol is to be kept cold. No alcohol will be served or consumed in front of the building. Cones or ropes will designate restricted area on each side of the building. Two and a half police details will be on-site from the start, 9:30 or until crowd disperse, whichever is later. Per the Town of Holbrook zoning bylaws, all parking for the event must be on premises. There is to be no parking on Route 139. Noise level must comply with the Board of Health current noise level requirements.
And one more thing, the Fire Chief wanted to just add.
Just add that condition, that an emergency vehicle access lane be maintained as well.
Yep, that's already, that's on, you can say that, but that's already on the diagram that we, that we have. Have you seen it? You're actually holding it, yep.
And an emergency lane for emergency vehicle access shall be maintained at all times.
We have a motion, I'll second it. All those in favor? Great, congratulations, good luck. Good luck.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you to the Board, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, there is another motion that I, I ended up having a conversation with Town Council today, and there's no, there's no reference anywhere in our bylaws to actually approving and permitting such a festival, and it probably should be a vote by the Board of Selectmen to actually, I realize that the, the vote for the liquor license almost, it's implied that you're approving the event. approving the event, but I did put a second vote in here that I think would be a good technique.
Is it legal? We don't have.
The town council, it's, it's, it is legal.
So, I move that the board permit the William B. Dalton American Legion Post 137 to hold an outdoor festival on July 9, 2016. Special conditions of this approval include no alcohol be served or consumed in the front of the building. Cones and ropes will be designated to restricted area on each side of the building. Two police details will be on, or two and a half police details will be on-site during the event. And per the Town of Holbrook zoning bylaws, all parking in event must be on-premise. There is no parking on Route 139. And noise levels must comply with the Board of Health current noise level requirements. Second. So, it's a motion seconded. All those in favor? Great. Thank you.
And we've taken votes like that before for block parties, I believe, and for, well, a couple of block parties I'm familiar with.
It's fine. We'd rather be in compliance if we can. All right. Our next order of business is discuss and set the FY17 ambulance billing rates. So, this is for Chief McFadden. And this is something we do standard throughout the, at this time every year. Did we have any help this year with, from the consultants?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And actually, we did have a meeting earlier, this, this week, last week, a couple of weeks ago. And if it pleases the chair, I'd defer to Town Administrator Gordon at this time to just give a brief report on that meeting, which we can follow up with.
Okay.
Sure. So, so we met with New England Medical Billing, a third-party billing agency. And we've had questions over the years and over the last few months. You know, when we do our quarterly abatements, what are we really voting on? You know, what's in those numbers? So, I, I'm going to pass this out. Trying not to give too much information. This is basically one of the, one of a prior quarter billing, where we had summative adjustments. And you have all these line items that we're voting to abate. So, that was sort of the topic of discussion when they came out, is just sort of get an understanding of, of what, what this is. I'm sorry, do I, am I missing? And, and so what, what we found out, so I marked some of those with an asterisk, and I'm calling those true abatements. Those are, those are items that we are actually determining to be something that we are not able to collect. Whether it be, you know, the first one is somebody was deceased. You have some that are seniors where they're just, we're not going to collect it. A determination has been made that we are going to forgive this, essentially. The bigger one there, the 24,904, is also similar in that we're abating it and forgiving it. However, it's already gone to a collection agency, Peter Roberts Collection Agency. And, and it's just, it's, it's not collectible for a number of reasons. The, the bigger items.
And that's, I'm sorry, so that's, is that one incident? Or is that a, it's a collection of, okay, gotcha. Dumped into one category?
Dumped into one category. What they're going to change this around first, so it's clearer, and have, have abatements and adjustments. So, the, all of the other items, you know, Mass Health, Medicare, those are adjustments. And, and basically, they're contractual, meaning the Medicare, the healthcare plan, whatever the line is, has a rate that they have an approved rate for an ambulance from. And the, the cost that you see there, especially with Medicare, 79,000, that's the delta between what we bill and what they actually have for an approved rate. And so, if you look at our total, total billing for fiscal year 2016 to date, we're over $1 million. We're at like 1.1 million. We've collected about 584,000. Most of this is that difference between our billing rate and what the different plans will allow. Some of the plans are fine with our billing rate. And, and in some cases, we're a little bit below some of the plans' standard. You can't, you can't have a different rate for each.
So, you're saying it's, in some cases, it might be futile to, to increase rates that are just going to be not paid by the insurance?
In some cases, it would be. And I brought that up with them, and they said, well, you should keep up with it because that's sort of what the market bears, and that's, those are, that's based on your costs.
Is there, is there a formula based on a percentage? Like, if we charge them $100, insurance pays 90% of that? Or is it, is it, no, this is ridiculous that you're charging $400 for oxygen where the standard is 250, so we're not going to pay the difference?
What, what they use for a standard is, is Medicare. And they have Medicare plus 25%, Medicare plus 50%, Medicare plus 75%. And I think we're at Medicare plus 50%.
You're saying?
No, Medicare, yeah, Medicare plus, plus, plus 100, I'm sorry, 150%. So.
And so, we're really, it's kind of silly to be setting rates that we know we're not going to be able to collect on?
But for some of them, we are collecting. If you notice, a lot of these health plans, there's small dollars there, and that could be, that, that, there could be other, other factors. It could be that maybe they took them to a different hospital rather than the closest hospital, and they're only reimbursing for South Shore, and somebody wants to go to Mass General. In that case, maybe Harvard Pilgrim would have paid the full amount. And, who knows, maybe even a little bit more, depending on the rate for South Shore. But they're charging us something for, for a different hospital.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to ask the chief. Are there some companies that are going to pay more? There's some that pay you more than what our rates are. Is that right?
There are some that pay us more.
Than what our rates are?
Well, my understanding is that whatever we bill them, they, the insurance, you know, if you had the premium insurance product on the planet, and, you know, the Holbrook Fire Department Ambulance Service sent a bill for $2,000, I would expect that they would pay the $2,000, for example. So, when we set the rates, we bill based on what our rates are. But as the town administrator was explaining, Medicare, for example, has a fixed reimbursement.
I understand that, but I'm saying there are companies that will pay more than what our rates are.
There may be. There may, there may be.
I thought you just said.
Yeah, I'm saying that our, increasing our rate is not totally futile, because, you know.
No, because if someone's going to pay more, what do we care how much we write off, as long as we collect more?
That's right. That's right.
Doesn't make sense. If we can collect more, we should do it. I don't know how you study that or come up with a formula.
As long as it's reasonable, you know? And that's what these folks are recommending rates based on the market. And, and you're right. If, if Medicare, for example, is only reimbursing, right now Medicare is reimbursing $476 per, I guess, some kind of standard trip, where our rate for that is 1,017. Harvard Pilgrim must pay the whole 117 because we're not seeing much of a, of a, an adjustment for them.
Sure.
I think you need to look at.
So, I mean, is this discussion about changing the rates, or is it more of a follow-up down on what we were charged, you guys charged with, you know, a month ago?
This agenda item is two-part.
Okay.
We could have done the rate part, and we're doing this part first.
Okay.
So, all we're doing is explaining, you know, what that quarterly is.
Why we write off $100,000 every quarter.
Right.
Because of the way the system is, is set up.
And what we'll do for the future ones will, will clearly show, and I really think you only have to vote on the abatement. We can show it all, but the abatement is, is the amount that we're actually forgiving.
Correct.
The other ones are contractual. We can't control those. And, and you got to charge a flat rate. We can't, you know, we, because we talked all about this. They were here for a couple of hours. You, we can't look at what is, what each provider will reimburse for, and say, all right, we're going to charge Harvard Pilgrim X and Blue Cross Blue Shield Y because of what they allow. It's a flat rate.
What if you billed them J, and it's all the same?
Which is basically what we do.
Which is what we do. They come up with a billing rate that is really market-driven to a certain extent, in line. You know, I asked how, how do we compare?
But if we're missing any money, I don't want to miss any money. That's all.
No, I, I completely understand where you're coming from. I just, I pointed this out in the meeting during our discussion, that the real, one of, one of the concerns that I always have is making sure that we don't forget that the end, that the end user, the patients we're caring for, need our services in times of crisis. And so, from, from time to time, I know I've personally had experiences where we've been at people's houses and who have, you know, used the ambulance service before and, you know, received bills for that service. And they have concerns about the financial impact. And so, there's a, we always, and we always make sure to say to them, your health is most important, and, you know, the town is, you know, we're not in, in the business to, to just, just make money. We have a very robust forgiveness.
Well, you can see that, but we don't care how much you give away. It's how much you keep.
No, I, I agree. I'm just pointing out that, that I, I always have a little bit of concern that, that you don't want to, you know, create a disincentive for people to call 911 because they're worried about eventual.
They're not going to pay anyways if they don't have the money. You know?
That's what he was getting at before, that they're always concerned, or some people are concerned that they don't have the money, and they're leery of people calling for the service, where, you know, Chief McFadden said, call for the service regardless of your, your situation, and we'll figure it out.
That's right. That's right. And I just want to make sure that message is loud and clear.
As long as we don't leave anything on the table.
That's all.
It's called the small rite.
So, we're leaving half a million on the table, you know, because we're collecting 500,000 and we're billing out about a million. I never really understood it. Thanks to the folks here at New England Medical Billing, they kind of walked us through it. The next time we do this, they're working on some spreadsheets that'll make it clearer to give us the abated amount up top. That's what we want to watch, to make sure we understand what we're actually abating. And then the adjustments will be down below, which really are just contractual, and there's not much you can do about it. So, so that's that part of it. The next part is the increase in the rates.
Can't wait for that.
Any other questions?
No. I can't wait for it either.
So, so just to follow up, that the process we've been using for the past years is around the beginning of the fourth quarter of the fiscal year, I'll send an email over to the billing company, ask them to do a review of usual and customary in our area, give us some recommendations as to what's appropriate for the Town of Holbrook based on trends in the industry, based on their knowledge and their expertise. And so, they, did you get a spreadsheet of past?
No, we didn't have anything.
Okay.
We were waiting for them from you.
Okay.
It's fine. We can, we can discuss it next, next time we have.
How do we pay them? By how much we bill them?
Vote tonight. Yes. Yeah, they're, they're, they're on commission.
On commission?
Commission basically, yeah.
Are these the new rates?
Yes.
Do you want to pass out?
Do we pay them anything unforgiven, on abated, abated money?
I don't think so. So, in the, in the yellow is our current fees, and in the blue is their recommendations for FY17's rates.
Well, they're watching it.
And they also have the opportunity of looking at what other communities are doing. So, I'm sure they're keeping us in line with, with everyone else. And if you can remember, several years ago, we were deficient in a lot of these, these areas where we weren't charging anywhere near the market, the market rate. So.
Yeah, I think, I think the, since we've been addressing this annually, Mr. Chair, that, that we seem to have, like you said, evened out the, evened out the spikes in, in our rates. It just has been a more steady increase. So.
Okay. So, I move that we accept the recommendations from Northeast Medical Billing as printed on the spreadsheet.
So, I move.
Move and second it. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Chief, why are you standing? Next order of business is transfer request for EMT. So, I can read it. It's $3,623.67 to be transferred from EMT Training Account 012305113001 to EMT Expense 01-230-5421-000. The balance in the, in the aforementioned account is $13,567.49. So, this is covering, covering what on expenses?
This is a typical year on housekeeping. Transfers we close out FY16. Both the line items are in the EMT department. Just move a small portion from last year, from last year's town meeting appropriation from the salaries to expenses to keep the accounts balanced. Now, we have a number pending, number of pending bills for expenses related to the ambulance service, including needed medical equipment supplies, as well as some repairs that were necessary to both the departments transporting ambulances.
Okay. Any questions for the chief in regards to this?
No.
So, move the motion as, as stated.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Is this the only one?
Right now, I know we have, the chief's going for a reserve fund transfer to cover some extra cost he has in personnel.
Okay.
So, that'll go directly to the finance committee. And we've been rattling the trees. You're all set. This is it for you. And so far, he says they're good, but they still got a couple more weeks.
Okay. All right. So, we have appointments. This is the annual opportunity to appoint individuals to various boards and committees. And they're all pretty, they're pretty straightforward. The only ones that, that are not is the Council, Council on Aging. We have only one vacancy. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right. So, we have, we have one vacancy, but we have multiple people that are looking for, for the position. So, we have Richard Dean, who is also on the Friends of the Council on Aging. We have former Selectman Paul Stigus. We have former Town Accountant Cindy Brennan. He's also a member of the, of the council. And Denise Lewis. Discussion on individuals.
Are you just discussing the council needs or any, anything?
No, this is, just because all the rest of them are just a pure read, straight through?
No, there's one, there's one that would be a change. I talked to Eddie O'Brien today, and he said he would be willing to do it.
For which?
The Norfolk County Advisory Board. And I'd like to recommend Daniel Lee.
Okay.
Daniel, one question.
First. No problem with that. When we get to it, we'll, we'll, we'll insert that name. It's fine. So, just because there's, there's the one physician and multiple people interested, you know, for, for that matter, I was interested as well in, in the Council on Aging, to be able to, to, to help out that board and the seniors. I, I know all these individuals personally who are looking to, looking for the selection. For those who don't know, there's, there's always a need for financial accountability on the, on the board and with the Council on Aging. There's a lot of things that are at the state level, whether it's corporations and, and that sort of thing, that still need to, to, to happen, for them to be fully functional with the, with all of their, their programs, their leasing of funds and things of that nature from several accounts that they're in charge of. I know that Cindy Brennan was a, was a great, was a great asset to the town for the many, many years that she served here. She's also an active member of the, of the council. And I would recommend her for, to fill that, that final position for, for our appointment.
I think she'd be very good. I think you have a couple of others, real good ones there.
Yeah.
If openings occur, we keep those names in mind.
Yeah, I was actually surprised that there was, as many of the, the current board members wanted to retain their positions. wanted to retain their positions, which is also a very good thing. And I, I like to see multiple people going for the positions, but I think you're right. You know, as we, we have different positions open, we should probably keep this list on file and then reference it, you know, as individuals start to drop out from the, from the committee. So, any other discussion on, on the appointment?
I would think someone, Cindy would be a good fit money-wise.
Yeah, and she knows, she knows, she knows how the town works, she knows how the Council on Aging works. It just, it just makes, it makes a lot of sense. And now that she's newly retired, she has a lot more time to, to donate to the, to the community, so I think that is, I think that is good, so.
Another particularly good account, individual would be Paul Stigas. So, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm more than 100% for Cindy, but I just think you have-
Yeah. Paul would be another good choice.
Okay. All right, so it's great to have a lot of choices and, you know, I, I would guarantee that they'll be, their name will be called and their service will be, will be used. It's just not at this point in time for this particular one vacancy that we had.
And they can all be involved as friends.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that was the only discussion that I, that I had there. I've made, made that notation, so when we roll through the various appointments, I'll insert Mr. Lee's name where appropriate and Cindy's name where, where appropriate. So, I'll start with terms to expire June 30th. In 2012, Town Accountant Bethany Mosley, Animal Control Officer-
2020.
2020, what'd I say?
2012.
2012, okay. She's already expired.
Yep.
Town Accountant Bethany Mosley, 2020. Animal Control Officer Larice Hedges, 2017. Building Inspector Daniel F. Moriarty Jr., 2017. Assistant Building Inspector Arthur Boyle, 2017. Emergency Management Director Rick Roos, 2017. Field Driver, Pound Keeper, Larice Hedges, 2017. Norfolk County Advisory Board Representative Daniel Lee, 2017. Parking Clerk and Hearings, Hearing Officer G. Marie Terrera, 2017. Plumbing and Gas Inspector John Cowanen, 2017. Assistant Plumbing Inspector Gas, Assistant Plumbing and Gas Inspector Mark Grabinski, 2017. Public Works Supervisor Dan Daly, 2017. Sealer of Weights and Measures D. Leo Donovan, 2017. Deputy Sealer of Weights and Measures D. Leo Donovan. Town Council Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane, 2017. Veterans Agent Leo A. Fuller, 2017. Wire Inspector Alfred G. Oswald, 2017.
Can you just vote on the, so I can vote, I can't vote on one of them, so can we just vote that one separate?
Yep. We'll move to, to accept all of those as stated, with the exception of the Building Inspector, Daniel F. Moriarty.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Great. And moving to accept Building Inspector Daniel F. Moriarty Jr. for a term to expire June 30th, 2017, as a Building Inspector.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Great, so 4-0-1 abstention, thank you for that. If you want to-
Page two. All right. Board of Registers, Sarita George, 2019. Conservation Commission, Joseph A. Davenport, 2019. Jason M. Oat, 2019. Constable, Constables Ralph J. Colaruso, 2017. Paul Kennedy, 2017. Gerard Loomis, 2017. Mark Shanley, 2017. Council on Aging, Catherine Brennan, 2017. Louise Curry, 2017. William Curry, 2017. Robert Mattson, 2017. Raymond Molling, 2017. Gary Newton, 2017. Mary Pichuka, 2017. Monica Scanlon, 2017. Pauline Smith, 2017. Jerain Swanton, 2017. Cindy Brennan, 2017. Emergency Management Auxiliary Police Officers, Tony Kahn, 2017. Vincent D. Jamacomo, 2017. Michael Melvisti, 2017. Donald McCabe, 2017. Richard Roos, 2017. Danny Stale, 2017. Scott Stewart, 2017. Dennis Sullivan, 2017. Kenneth Tarrell Jr., 2017. Shane M. Tabario, 2017.
So, we'll move that we accept those appointments as stated?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sheehan, all those in favor? All right. Kevin, you want to do next?
Sure. Special Police Officers, William A. Keegan Jr., 2017. Richard Roos, 2017.
Yep.
Dennis Sullivan, 2017. James Graham, 2017. Amando Soto Juno, 2017. Gary Losowicz, 2017. Robert Tomaco, 2017. Michael Lee, 2017. Danny Stale, 2017. Kenny Tell Jr., 2017. Robert Solprizio, 2017. Joshua Riley, 2017. James Hannan, 2017. Daniel Hackett, 2017. Hoboken Historical Commission, Esther L. Tucker, 2019. David Dingoldy, 2019. Local Emergency Planning Committee, Matt V. Moore, 2017. William J. Smith, 2017. Benjamin F. Eckord, 2017. Luke McFadden, 2017. Ryan McCauley, 2017. Paul Cowanen, 2017. And Rich Roos, 2017. Permanent Cable Television Advisory, Keith O'Brien, 2019. And Paul DiGronimo, 2019. Recreation Commission, Joan M. Brown, 2017. John Flanagan, 2017. Annette Grenon, 2017. Town Forest Committee, David Dingoldy, 2019. And Town Scholarship Committee, David Dingoldy and Linda Austin, 2019.
Okay, so we'll take this motion, similar to the, the last motion that we had. We have a potential conflict of interest, so we will omit Michael Lee from the Special Police Officers for the initial vote and then vote on him separately. So, all those in favor of, of the appointments read by Selectman Sheehan? It's been, it's been moved by me, all those in favor? Okay. And taking Michael Lee as a special police officer for his appointment to end in June 30th, 2017, as printed?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moriarty, all those in favor? Great, with one abstention.
Zoning Board of Appeals, James A. Day, 2019. Scott McCollum, Associate Member, 2017. Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Michael Fleming, Citizen at Lodge, 2017. Deng Ying, Citizen at Lodge, 2017. Daniel F. Moriarty III, Selectman's Rep, 2017. Town Accountant Bethany Mosley, Ex officio. Energy Committee, Matthew V. Moore, 2019. Thomas J. Taylor, 2019. Permanent School Building Committee, Voting Members, Representative of Office Authorized by Law to Construct Buildings, Daniel Moriarty Jr., 63019. Member knowledgeable in educational mission and functions, functions and facility, Beth Tolson, 63019. Member of Community, Construction Facilities Management, Jim Day, James Day, 63019. Member of Community at Lodge, Stephanie Tombridge, Trobridge, 63019.
Okay, so similar, small town, we have issues of this nature, so we'll take the aforementioned appointments minus Daniel Moriarty Jr. for the, the potential of conflict. So, I'll second those appointments and we will leave out Mr. Moriarty to a single vote. All those in favor? Great, thank you. And then appointing Daniel Moriarty Jr., Representative of the Office Authorized by Town, by law to construct school buildings, as a voting member for the Permanent School Committee with an appointment to end 63019.
So, move.
So, it's motioned and seconded, all those in favor? So, 4-0-1. Thank you very much. All right, and updates from Public, Public Safety. So, I don't know, Chief McFadden, if you have anything further to, to discuss?
Never give up an opportunity to talk.
I mean, very good. I hear you know that you're continuing to recover well, spoke of today, being in surgery next week, so we'll get another update at your next meeting on that. Town's Fire, the Annual Fire Prevention Program is underway, so you'll see the fire apparatus out doing updates to the computer raid dispatch system and routine safety checks and we're continuing to work on getting a new engine in town, so it's, more to come. Thank you.
Did you set the date on the ceremony yet?
We have not. The Town Minister Gordon and I spoke actually today about it and we're narrowing it down. It really, actually briefly, I want to thank Steve Hook. We had a minor issue with the radio vendor that he was able to, it wasn't a big, big issue, but it was a bump in the road and he was able to get that, help get that solved. So, we're, we're trying to work out things like that, radio installation, equipment mounting, which leaves our timetable a little up in the air at the moment, but we'll be in constant contact on it.
If, if we're, if we're able to, what we talked about doing is try to do it like at 6:30 on, on the night of a Board of Selectmen meeting. So, I'll be there and a quick christening, something for the kids if they want to get it out there on Facebook and whatnot and-
Yeah. As soon as I have some more, more definitive information as far as what the time's looking like, I'll be the first to let you know.
Thank you, appreciate it. Chief Smith?
We're coming into our busy season now. We're seeing an increase in accidents, so we started doing rain and patrols. Right now, we're working on Plymouth Street with the people crossing the double solid line to come down to the traffic light. We work on that in the morning and the night. We're also seeing an increase in youth violations, kids hanging around causing vandalism. We addressed a situation down in the Grove on North Shore Road. The next big increase is domestics. We seem to be going to domestic every day. Last Sunday on Father's Day, we had a very violent domestic. We arrested the person. He was held overnight. Luckily, the sheriff took him, it was $20,000 cash bail. Otherwise, it would have been a burden for the town, but that worked out. We are having a blood drive on July 10th. Dana Favers coming out to the Public Safety Building. They're going to do all the advertising, they're going to bring their van out, we're going to try to have additional parking at the church, they're going to have raffles, they're going to do everything. Be started 10 o'clock in the morning. And the recruits passed their first PT last Thursday. Tomorrow is the second part of it. Once they pass that and I get the paperwork, I can submit it to the Academy, so we'll have a confirmed date.
Great. Excellent. Anything for the chief?
No.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Director Hook?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. Just going to start out tonight to report that the equipment grant to dispatch Canton Fire has been sent in, submitted, so we should hear something probably by the end of July, whether that grant is successful. And as you know, that is key to moving forward with Canton. Whitman Fire, we've been dispatching since February, it's going very smooth, we haven't had any issues. They're very happy, things are going well with that. And I just, I mentioned this a couple, a couple of meetings ago, but I just want to let you know that we are starting the car seat program up again. We had it last year, then it kind of went away for a while, but we're going to, in conjunction with the Police Department, the Communication Center and the Police Department both have certified technicians and in July, we're going to start up that program again. And that program is, residents can come and our certified technicians will look at the car seats to make sure it's, they are installed properly and we have free car seats available for people that need them. And that's all funded through grant as well.
Is that a, a one date or is it an ongoing, you know, for three months?
No, no, it's an ongoing thing. We'll probably do, we'll probably, it's a by appointment, so we'll get the, we'll get the word out when we start doing it.
Great.
We already have the car seats already in the budget.
Perfect, perfect.
Happy to answer any questions that you have?
No. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ben?
Okay, just to repeat, this Saturday is the hazardous waste and also yard waste dropped off, excuse me, at the, the old landfill at 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Also, we're continuing to work around the town, sweeping the streets, road repairs, working at the fields. Also, we're concentrating on giving the castle keening area a little facelift. We're down there today with the power washer, washing away some of the graffiti, wire brushing the, the rails and repainting the gazebo. We're doing some repairs to the, there are five benches there that are in pretty bad shape, so we're refurbishing all the wood on the benches and also we're going to bring in a bunch of new wood chips for the area to make it really nice, so.
When will that work? You finished?
Probably by the second week in July.
Awesome, great.
I got to wait to buy the chips, everything else will be done.
I had someone mention the benches to me and that's great that you're doing it, but they mentioned one other thing, no smoking signs there.
Okay.
The, the kids are there and people are smoking.
Great idea.
Excellent, okay.
Someone approached me, I told them I'd bring it up to the mayor, with all the stuff you got going on, you could put it on maybe a to-do list or whatever, but in front of the churches, they were talking about crosswalks that were kind of faded out.
Really?
In front of like St. John's and-
St. John's has been changed. When they did King Road intersection there-
Oh, they moved it forward, right?
They moved it to where the crosswalk-
Oh, they must be talking about the other one that's behind it then, because there's, isn't there one-
That's the look, I mean-
Yeah, there's one that, I think that's behind it, that's kind of faded out, but it's still a little, little bit of it showing and maybe they thought that needed to be repainted, so.
I could meet you, you could-
Okay.
You know, show it to me. I know we stopped doing the original one because when they did the, like I said, when they did the intersection over, they moved the crosswalk closer to King Road, so.
Yeah, I think it might be, I think that might be it. But, you know, just take a look at it and see what, what needs to be done, if anything. Have we, do we do that on an annual basis, the crosswalks?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and what time of year is that?
Um, usually-
Right before school?
Yeah, we try to get it in the spring.
Okay.
Sometimes we, we touch them up in the fall if they need it.
Okay, very good. Anything else from Mr. Cord?
Thanks for cleaning up the playground. Thank you.
Fantastic, all right, great.
And you have the Selco Construction Contract. You got, do you have copies?
I gave you-
You gave me a copy and I thought you had other copies.
I got one copy.
Okay, so it's a contract for, I mentioned it earlier, for Laurel Park. It's $108,000 for the replacement of the wall at Laurel Park. And we just got the contract today, I think we want to wait for the next meeting, so I just hope that you guys could sign with the votes.
What we did do is we cut out the engineering because it's a pretty cut and dry job. The price would have been like $133,000, so we're just going to go forward. I'll do the inspections on the job and we'll do-
Pass around the other copy.
It'll be a savings.
You want this one signed?
Hold on, yeah, you basically signed it, yeah, it's $108,000.
Can you pull it together?
They've done a lot of work in town and they've been very happy with it.
I make a motion that the town vote to give the water installation on Laurel Park to Selco Construction Corp. for the amount of $108,030.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sheehan, all those in favor? Great, is there any other business for, for the board this evening? All the comments, no?
Just one.
Yes?
Tim and Matt, a year from now, that new school's going to be open. It goes by quick. I don't know if the schools talked to you about what their plans are on moving stuff in, how their IT stuff is going. It's been quick. We've already into it a year and a year, that school's going to be open. I don't know if they've contacted- open, I don't know if they've contacted you, Tim, as the Town Administrator, about what their plans are of moving whatever equipment they have into the building, or what they've done for new stuff.
I mean, that's typically, maybe it's an item for discussion at the Permanent School Building Meeting, which we have monthly.
Right, so if I just.
We can bring that up.
But I'll reach out to Joel and make sure that's, Bobby, you know, he has his metrics.
Right. There's 1,000 points on the checklist, and we're going through it, so it's all methodical, and I don't think we're at that stage yet from a move-in.
No.
I'm sure from a planning standpoint.
That's what I mean by planning, not by moving it, but planning, but it seems, it's going quick, it's hard to believe we're going to be, a year from now, it's going to be ready to start moving stuff in, and the other school's going away.
So are we meeting the 7th, or the, I seen something today that said the 13th? Maji had sent something today saying that the next board meeting was the 13th?
Is it not?
13th is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
I have it as the 13th.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not two weeks from?
No, because it's, I think with the.
The holiday?
With the 4th of July, I think we.
Well, it's always the 2nd and 4th, right? Are we always the 2nd and 4th?
Could it be?
Is that what it is?
You know, there's five weeks in June, that's what it is, okay.
So will the.
So our next meeting is the 13th.
The Assistant Wire Inspector position, that'll be, I think, closed on the 27th, so would that be on for the next meeting?
On for the next meeting, right. We couldn't put it on for this meeting.
Right, right.
It's still open.
Correct. Okay.
All right, good, all right, so move to adjourn board of selectmen meeting from June 22nd.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? Thank you very much, good night.